Good afternoon and welcome to our March 15th work session. Today, we have a few things on our agenda, and our first item is our facilities update. Dr. Matt Ludes, superintendent.
Things continue to move forward with both the Mayock Elementary and Mayock Middle expansion projects. Again, when you're working through both DPI, both through the state and through local, there are always lots of forms and lots of make sure to check in the box, but things are moving forward. We got our colors ready for Mayock Elementary and Mayock Middle. You can see the, we've demoed the cafeteria completely. We'll have a picture of that here in a moment. And, uh, I did go to the eye doctor last week. I had lots of trouble. Currently relocating and removing the old underground utilities, which is, Matt makes sure all that in person, we keep it building up and running, tending to meet the IT requirements and plan, design, and ongoing preparation. Mayock Middle School, Matt, what was the school update? Were we, we still have broken down there, right?
No, Mayock Middle School is actually approved for permitting. They're still waiting on the perimeter fencing. It's somehow hard to come by now. So perimeter fencing, sedimentation, silk control, and they are getting ready to relocate the modulars there to use as a construction trailer, but they're still on hold on all this stuff because they can't get a perimeter fence up. That's the first thing that's happening right now.
The superintendent, the state supervisor.
He's out there every day now.
Yeah, we saw him today.
Yeah. They believe they'll meet their deadlines?
Yeah. Yeah, they're not concerned at all.
Okay, good.
You can see what's left of the cafeteria. So that's how they're gonna make that, we're saving the old part, the actual kitchen part, and that will all be enclosed all the way to the building. Can't wait to see it. The yet-to-be-named Northern Elementary School, Matt and I met along with the county team, and we reviewed the RFQs, and it's now in the county sands in terms of reaching out to one of the vendors, and while we're on that, we'll get back to it.
Yeah, there's a selection that has been made, but the county has to notify them before it can be talked about.
There were five applications, and they were all pretty well-written. There's some really good candidates, people did a nice job, and we ended up with a very nice school. One other update, we applied, the county applied, along with our school board, for a $30 million grant. Hopefully, we can get that for the new elementary school. That would certainly help out the finances across the county.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that one of the grants is based on the tier system?
It's not. She mentioned, Rebecca mentioned, is Rebecca right? Rebecca mentioned that this one is not specific to tiers, so that's why we could actually apply for it, because normally, we don't qualify for any of those construction grants because of our tier, but this one is not.
Okay, good. Camden applied for it as well, they're tier three, so.
Really? Do you know Camden? You have one?
Not sure.
And do we know when we're breaking ground on the new elementary school?
The, you talking about the new one?
The new one.
Yeah, the new one.
We don't know when they're breaking ground on it, but we know that this, no matter what, is supposed to be finished for the 25th school year.
Whatever.
One of the teams actually said they could finish for the 24th school year.
Whoa.
Yeah, so that's a nice question. Yeah.
And what's the date for Mayock Middle to be finished, to be complete?
By the school year of '23, '24. The summer of '23, both simultaneously with the Mayock.
Now, do you know Mayock Elementary also?
Yes.
So basically, another year?
Yes.
Well, I know, I mean, and we have step backs, like, just something that sounds simple as the fencing.
Yeah.
I mean, this doesn't.
Not being able to get materials.
They think they can make it up?
That's it. It's supply and demand, supply chain issues for everything, but they're, right now, I talked to both of the general superintendents, and they're not concerned. They're pretty sure it's still good, everything's good. Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, they're not nervous at all. When they get nervous, I'll get nervous.
I know that just doesn't seem that far away now, when we're in spring of '22.
That'd be great.
When we sit through those construction meetings, we are, I listen, this is a new world for me, certainly, in terms of school construction and so on, but you can hear, we're hitting the timelines that they threw out a year ago. All right, we gotta have this, we gotta have that, and you ask through the county commissioners. So things are rolling along.
As expected.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions? Thank you. Dr. Ludes, resolution on career and technical education graduation track. Ms. Renee Dowdies.
All right, so this evening, when we get to our general meeting, I'll read a little bit more of a formal statement, but just to recap, in 2016, we began discussions at a district level about alternate diploma track options. At the time, I was the high school principal, was seeing a lot of things, had some conversations with district staff, got some support with district staff. They arranged for some meetings. The first one, Dr. Dowdies was part of, and, you know, helped to get that off the ground with the state Board of Education representative for our region, Becky Taylor at the time. She was not only a member of the state board, but a staunch advocate for CTE programming or vocational programming. So in 2016, which seems like light years ago, we began these conversations with folks not just in our district, but outside of our district. From there, we set up subsequent meetings with former state superintendent Mark Johnson and his team in Raleigh, which we traveled to Raleigh and met with them at DPI. And then we've also had meetings with Bob Steinberg and Representative Bobby Hannick at our local level to talk with them and the board at that time about vocational planning, regional vocational schools, diploma track options, some flexibility with the current accountability model where we're penalized if students don't finish through Math III. We've put all of this on the table, and we've advocated as loudly as we feel like we can about the need for alternate diploma track options and not a one-size-fits-all model. So tonight at the board meeting, and today as a preview in the work session, Dr. Dowdies is gonna read a resolution that we proposed to take to the State Board of Education requesting that they again look at an alternate diploma track option for students, so that there is not just a one-size-fits-all model that there currently is for students. So, Dr. Dowdies, if you would like, I don't think we're gonna read that here in the work session as well, but you all have a copy of the most up-to-date version of that resolution.
Here, go ahead and do the logic here.
Right.
It's been a long time coming, and just to preface, Dr. Ludes is going to take this to a lot of the other state superintendents to see if we can get them to join us in this effort, but our resolution reads, whereas not all students want to or need to go to college, and whereas North Carolina currently recognizes only one pathway to graduation for all students, and whereas North Carolina's current math requirements for all students are Math 1, Algebra 1, Math 2, Geometry, Math 3, Algebra, Trigonometry, Precalculus, Plus of Fourth Math Course, and whereas students unsuccessful at meeting the math requirement are more likely to drop out, and whereas students unsuccessful at meeting the math requirement benefit from Technical Math Options, and whereas our student, or whereas our educational system should be designed to allow all K-12 students a personalized education, and whereas a renewed emphasis should be placed on opportunities for high school students to pursue professional-slash-technical certificates through Career Technical Education, which is Vocational Education Programs, and whereas students earning a trade or vocational diploma have the opportunity to enter into meaningful careers and accrue little or no student loan or college debt, and whereas we must join together to support all students in meeting their educational and career goals. Therefore, be it resolved that the Career Board of Education requests the State Board of Education amend the career and college-ready graduation requirement framework to provide an additional secondary diploma track that recognizes and values career, technical education, vocational education. Be it further resolved, the Career Board of Education recommends that the Career Technical Education Diploma Track include Technical Math Course Options after the completion of Math 1, and informational literacy as it relates to career and technical education, adopted by the Career Board of Education, which we do through the today's state. But just to get on my high horse once again, the State Board of Education is doing a disservice to many of our students, not only at Career Top, but throughout the state, by not offering, you know, a vocational career technical education track. And goodness knows, in our county especially, with all the construction going on, how many could really benefit and be productive members of the community, plus have a great career, you know, plumbing, heating, air conditioning, you know, electrical, construction, things like that, and I just wish our students had those job possibilities, and we need another career track.
We do.
We do.
And one of the things that I think is going on is that many parents and the general public, I talk to people outside of our, of our group of people, they're not aware that we don't have it, because Virginia does, and they, and so they don't become aware until their kid is like in the role of lots of it, and they can't do it, and so they just kind of bow to the system. I think we need to some way put out there advertisement about the fact that there is only one diploma track, and because parents and the general public, they listen to them more than they listen to us.
So I do hold out hope. There's discussions, so we, the graduation requirement, the future-ready core graduation requirements are up for renewal, basically, and so I think that this is a prime opportunity. If you've heard any of this current state superintendent, Catherine Truitt, and her message, she's declaring this the year of the workforce, and I think, again, there's a re-emphasis on vocational education and what it offers for students who are going off to enter the job force directly perhaps after high school. So I think the pump is primed for this revision, if you will, and again, this is not about the one-size-fits-all vocational diploma track option. This is about making sure that all kids have an opportunity to graduate aligned with what they're thinking they're gonna do after graduation, and not forcing everybody through the same model. And so I'm holding out hope that it just depends, I guess, on the lobbyists and who holds the most power to persuade our, you know, Board of Ed or our legislatures around what these graduation requirements look like. So, fingers crossed.
This will go directly to her as well?
So I'm sure we will send it to the state superintendent, the State Board of Education, and anybody else that we want to.
Can we, can we, because I think there's strength in numbers, can we get this to every county in the state of North Carolina?
So I think to Bill's point that Dr. Ludes is gonna share this with our Region 1 superintendents, again, I think that's where it starts. We've long talked about, and in fact, that first regional meeting, the first meeting we had in 2016, we invited Camden, and Elizabeth City, and Dayer, and all of them to the table with us as well to have that conversation, because we agree, there's power in numbers. So I think sharing it with the regional superintendents in Region 1 is a great place for us to start, and then Dr. Ludes' connections with Jack Coke, who oversees all of the superintendents, would be a great platform to say, look, this resolution came out of Career Top, we wanna share it with everybody.
Can you jump on board? If you're in agreement.
Yeah.
They'll share it out.
Okay.
I get a weekly email.
I can't say that I think the State Board of Education is the only avenue to get to this. I know Bob Steinberg told us in 2020, draft what you want, and I'll push it through. And I know the General Assembly can do things that the State Board doesn't necessarily agree with, and I think back to class of 2020, the seniors had to take pass or fail. The State Board of Education required it, couple of districts went to their representatives in the General Assembly, their seniors were allowed to choose the letter grade. So the General Assembly made that happen. So I think we definitely, I know Bob Steinberg's on board, he told us he was back in 2020, and I'm sure Bobby Hannick will be on board, and Ed Goodwin as well. So I think we need to definitely get it to them.
I agree.
Can we push this out to parents? Can we get them involved, or just to let them know?
General public and parents, they need to be contacting those state representatives and those.
Is this month CTE month, or was it just a week?
No, it's, it was all of February.
February.
Dr. Durham, can you reference this in your wonderful newsletter?
Yes, ma'am. Whatever you all need me to put in there, I will include it.
I mean, that is, once again.
Certainly let the parents know that we're working. There used to be that second track. I know my son had that option.
Yeah.
Graduated in 2010. My daughter didn't have the option, but graduated in 2020.
But I feel like Mr. Durham said, parents just wanted it to happen.
So if 2010, we could.
We could.
It was in 2014, it was when Race to the Top happened.
It tied with ES.
It moved back to Race to the Top.
It's tied with the original, probably more popular, No Child Left Behind, which became the ESDA waiver, so when the state re-upped for the agreement, this was what we put forth to ensure that we can move it forward, and in federal dollars, it's in the flood.
Anyway, I agree with you on the No Child Left Behind, leaving the number behind.
Right.
And these tie at higher level tests that all children have to take.
Yeah, right.
I, you know, not everybody is.
Well, the math they need for electricity is different than the math they need for to be a plumber, and I can't do either one of them.
And we play that out in each of our presentations. We've talked about the alignment between the highest level required for an HVAC diploma at COA and what it takes to graduate high school, and we've showed all those trades and what the math requirements are. And again, this isn't about changing the rigor, this isn't a lowering of a rigor standard. I'll stand as firm as I can to argue that the math rigor required in an HVAC class would be tough for me. My brain thinks the algebra, trig, calculus track, right? So it's about the child, and it's about making sure that every student has the opportunity to be successful.
Absolutely, yes.
The informational literacy too, who we talked about, is, you know, real important, because would you want your construction worker to be able to read a tech manual?
Exactly.
Or tell you the symbolism and handling of syllabus?
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing away with, we're not dummying down the curriculum. What were you gonna say you left to do?
Dr. Durham, when we put that in your newsletter, if a lot of parents are like me, I read it, and I'm like, okay, yeah, I need to do that, I need to look up their number, look up their contact information, can we include that, where it's a click, an email, a phone number?
Yes, ma'am.
Because people have good intentions of calling or contacting your local representatives, but if you can click or, you know, have it at hand, I think that would be.
We'll put Bobby's email right in the box.
Yeah, right at the box.
That's a shame.
Well, what I recommend is that, even though, as a follow-up to tonight's meeting, we'll put out something on our social media that shares tonight the board adopted a resolution. We'll put that, and then we'll ask all of our schools to share that on their pages.
I think that'd be wonderful in the, in the contact information.
All right, okay. Any questions concerning the resolution? All right, moving on to our capital outlay budget review. Dr. Matt Ludes and Matt Mullins are gonna let us know what we need, must haves.
So I'm gonna have Matt walk through this before we get started. We, we have met with all the building principals with the exception of one at this point. We've gone over the budget, see what their needs are as well, remembering that the county is gracious enough to give us $1.4 million for capital outlay every year. Matt gives $1 million for those dollars, sand and technology, the other $400,000. We also do receive lottery funds that flow through the state, the county holds the lottery funds, and Matt is able to use those for large projects such as roofs, which is generally where he spends those. I did want to point out as we go through, just keep in mind that approximately 17% of that million dollars is spoken for before we even start, in the form of activity bus payments and also water release payments. Matt, you wanna watch them?
Sure. So I'll, I'll preface this whole thing with, yes, I have to buy playground mulch at every school, every elementary school. So I'm not gonna mention that at every school, but you'll see it on the paper. So playground mulch at every elementary school, we'll start with Central Elementary School. Item number two, to explain the similar metal pipe repair, the new addition on the northwest quadrant of that school that was put in back in the 90s, 80s maybe, they use rasp with black iron, and the dissimilar metals don't mesh, so now they're starting to leak periodically, so I'm gonna have, if I can, my plumbing team go in and cut all those joints and valves out and put them back the proper way this summer, so they don't start springing leaks during the school year like they have already. And try to, outside the principal and assistant principal's office, the tile is pretty deteriorated, so I'm gonna try to cover that with carpet for them, because we get parents visiting and things like that, and it doesn't look good to have come into the office and have tile cracking and chips everywhere. Curritown County Middle School, the new clock transmitter was going to be installed because it's old and outdated, it doesn't automatically update itself, so we have to program it all the time, but when I started looking into a new bell system, the new bell system's gonna require the new clock transmitter, so there'll be new clock transmitter with a bell interface, a new bell system, and a new fire alarm. Their bell system and fire alarm are original, like late 1970s, so they're manually programmed, push buttons and sequences of operation that people have to remember, and as the administration and staff changes, it gets altered. So that's the biggest things there. We did some work on the main side of bleachers there a few years back. We did what we could afford. Now the rest of it on that same side is starting to fail, so I'm gonna replace all of that so it matches, and take the old bleachers and keep them as spare parts for the other side until I can afford to do the other side, it's not used that much. Curritown County High School, the basin sinks in the restrooms, this is just the cost of the sinks, but we're gonna get something that works, yeah, so you don't have to dance in front of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one that works.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna have to be enforcement, you know, push some.
And, and the parks are hard to come by, 1996 parks are hard to find. We run into that since I've been here. The second one is small, something I noticed walking around the other day, the decorative columns on the bus ramp, the caulking's falling away, so the decorative tops of this column is gonna fall down eventually, so I'm gonna get that redone. Flashing and gutter repairs, I don't remember the linear footage, but I had a roofer walk around and look at the rusted flashing and gutters, and he's gonna replace that. Exterior trim painting, just so you know, when you go through here and you see painting, everybody's busy right now, so the painter's coming tomorrow, so I'll have those numbers probably in a week. And on top of what you see under Curritown County High School's listing here, they are listed in the lottery section. I'm gonna start coating that roof in phases, so it's gonna take two phases to get it done based on the amount of lottery money I think I'm gonna get this year, based on conversation with Susan myself. So I'll go down there real quickly. Lottery phase one of CCHS roof coating is roughly $240,000. Phase two next year will be somewhere around $275,000. Griggs Elementary, scale item one. I've been, you've noticed the last few years, the fire suppression system in the attic, the piping, because of the change in temperatures, rusting away, so I've been replacing that in stages as well. So this will be stage four in the attic, and there are two flat roof sections on the school that are very deteriorated and leaking, so I'm gonna get those coated and get a 20-year warranty on those as well. And playground shelter for the playground. Mr. Mike Reddell requested that, and it's a good idea, and we're starting to put those at all elementary schools a little at a time. Jarvisburg Elementary, the front entry light fixtures, we painted them a few years ago, the painted glass, so they're rusting away, so we're gonna replace them so things is not, that does not corrode. The gas lines that feed all of the gas HVAC systems on the roof are deteriorating and rusting away, so we're gonna replace those before they cause us more problems. The, where the brick joints come together around Jarvisburg, the caulking is falling away and cracking, and it's gonna cause a water intrusion problem if I don't get it done quickly, so that's top on my list. Again, the painting, get quotes tomorrow, and we're gonna try to get about four round cafeteria tables that add to accommodate more students.
Without chairs?
Yeah, they have fold-up chairs that they're gonna put with the tables, yeah.
You'll notice that when we get to Charlotte, we're gonna take down and pull it to Jarvisburg.
Yeah, pretty much.
Same year.
Yeah, same, about, within a year of each other, the same things are starting to happen. JP and AP Early College, add one door buzz-in for Building B, so the office can buzz them in from the office when they're moving around in between classes and going to the office and things of that nature. B Building Roof is in really bad shape, and I was going to coat it like I've been doing the last, for everything the last few years, but it's so bad that it's, has water intrusion, and it's so saturated that we're gonna have to rip it off and replace it. And shelter for the kids out here in the courtyard area to sit under at lunchtime.
Is that, is that roof now, that's not asphalt?
It, yes.
It is?
Modified Benjamin, it's the rolled-out roofing. That stuff is not, doesn't seem to last down here, so if I keep coating it, coating it, if I have to replace it, I'm replacing it, or something over rises that'll last longer. There's another item for JP and AP in your lottery, the original Building A is starting to ship some settling after almost 100 years, so I'm gonna start working on foundation work on that school. The staff restroom is probably sunk in three to four inches, so we gotta jack that up and support it. The south end of A Building is, you can start seeing the floor is sagging a little bit, so we're gonna do that this year and probably do the north end next year if I can get that done.
Do you have pretty good crawl space under there?
Oh, yeah, and it's decent in certain spots, it's tight in other spots. We're gonna have to cut a new access hole to get all the jacks and stuff under there. We've already worked that all out. The, that school, that building, because it's so old, the old hardwood's so solid that they span 22 feet between supports under there, and it's now starting to settle, so we're gonna get something in the middle of that and jack it back up. All right, Not Solid Elementary, replace the gym lights with LED lighting that when you accidentally turn them off, they come back on within a few seconds instead of 10 minutes. And that's, that's pretty much it for this year on Not Solid.
I'm surprised, because that's an old school too.
Well, it's pretty solid, but there's other things that need to be done there, and just prioritize itself, and right now, I got the roof that was leaking so badly last year, and right now, everything's in pretty good shape, but I'm sure there are things that I can attack there next year.
Do we have an update on the outdoor classroom?
Same thing as everything right now, supply chain. I called her last week, I called her a month before. Christmas, it was January, January, it was February, last week, it's Thursday. Thursday, Friday, or Monday, so yes, it's just, anything metal or steel, it's hard to come by, and they don't have enough help to install stuff, but when they hit it, two, three hours it'll be done. Those guys are quick, so it'll be, it'll be knocked out in less than a half a day.
The soccer nets there and frames do not belong to us, but they're on our property, correct?
They're parcs and rack, yeah, yeah.
Anything we can do to secure them?
I'm sure we can, we'll work into it.
I think, Mr. Durham.
I, we have an incident where a wind blew one over a locker in one of our students, so I got up with parcs and rack that day, and they, a few days later, they had sandbags, which kids here will know, because you know, kids fall.
Right.
So they had sandbags at my house, they've already been secured, and I walked out there and checked, I was gonna make sure that the sandbags are still in place.
Okay, so that's done. So are we sure that they're secure at all of the other schools? We don't want that to happen at any of the other ones, because that was a freak.
Well, the soccer nets at Mayock Elementary School are out in the main field where our kids don't play.
Yeah, the kids don't play.
The ones that used to be at Griggs, they're out in the grounds, so they won't ever move, and I haven't really paid attention to them. I think, I don't know about Jarvisburg, have you even paid attention?
They're out there, we don't pay any attention.
Okay.
I guess we do need to keep an eye on what parcs and rack puts on our property.
Yeah.
To make sure it is secure and safe for students.
Yeah. Yeah, we actually, Mr. Reddell and I had a conversation about a fourth job at Griggs that hadn't been used. that hadn't been used in years. So I just knew it was there. And they, they didn't even know they were paying for it anymore, so they got an offer there within the day after I called. It was getting serviced. It was, it was getting serviced. It was getting serviced and for David's late and they were paying for it, but they just didn't realize that they weren't using that facility and weren't, didn't need it anymore. It was tied into the bill. So it happens. I'm sure it didn't cost that much, but still, it's falling down. Anything else?
Um, I had a question on, um, the flashing and gutter repairs.
Yes.
Will that be replaced with a vinyl product?
It's gonna, it's gonna match what's already there. If I could get the, it's basically, we're replacing a couple hundred linear feet. I, I would love to type that into a full renovation and get everything as, as, uh, maintenance-free as possible.
Maintenance-free, yeah.
It's all about money. Moyacay Middle, uh, I think sometime during the year, they talked to me about getting some desks and said, hold off on them. So we're gonna get thirty desks for future expansion. Uh, all the scoreboards are aging, so we're gonna start off the baseball softball scoreboards because they get leather quite a bit and maybe next year we'll attack football and basketball. The chiller is twenty years old and I'm getting it to a point where I have it under a full service contract, but everything's not covered, so I'm ready to, uh, yeah, almost, yeah, it is twenty this year. Yeah.
It just.
Yeah, plasma, right?
Just happened.
So I could get a new chiller for three hundred thousand dollars or I can refurbish that when we get a five-year warranty for a hundred and forty-ish. So that's what, and we did that at the high school ten years ago and they've lasted really well. And I'll probably do that again at the high school when the time comes. Uh, media center windows have been leaking and my carpenters have been complaining, so I'm gonna get those recaulked. And the same thing with Shalbro and Jarvisburg, they expanded joints are in really bad shape.
Where are those?
If you walk along the walls, you'll see where the bricks meet and you'll see a caulk line that looks just like a pillar of brick and it'll have, uh, vertical cracks in it.
So it's in the brick?
It's in the bricks. Where the brick expands and contracts, where they did certain walls and they expand in separate different ways.
Okay. Is that the cause of a, um?
It just doesn't last forever.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a urethane, it's a urethane product and it's not meant to last forever.
Even though it says fifty years and life.
Yeah. And, and honestly, I, I looked at, can I get a product that's gonna last more than twenty years? But if I, if I did the expansion joints in a silicone product, it would probably cost four times as much. So if we get another twenty years out of the next urethane product, it'll be somebody else's problem after that.
What are you saying?
Um, just one thing. If, if you have to do this tonight at the board meeting, please don't say that.
All right, Moyacay Elementary, they're, they're getting a lot this year on the expansion. Uh, but, uh, we have, uh, one door we're gonna have on the access control because they're gonna be using that door more to get out to the playgrounds now down by the media center. And then the media center's storefront windows have been leaking, so they're gonna be clogged as well. As Dr. Loops said, if you look at Shalbro Elementary, it's pretty much the same as Jarvisburg. Uh, uh, front entry light fixtures, expansion joint caulking, rooftop gas lines. Uh, we are adding another door access control and replacing the original one there. Uh, so they can have, uh, buzz-in for the bus ramp and going out to the, the modulars out of that parking lot. And a couple of cafeteria tables for them as well.
That was school, Jarvisburg and Shalbro, ten years, ten?
Yes, uh, eleven, twelve.
Oh, twelve.
Yeah, two thousand eight and seven or eight and nine, so yeah, we had twelve, thirteen years.
They must be, because that's when we moved to the early college year.
Yeah. All right, so we are on to district needs. Uh, the fire department contacted me about six months ago and asked if we could put special boxes on the schools like the businesses have up in Dillon County, so they have a key, they can unlock the box, their hour key and get in the building in case of emergency. And the key, just the same as every business in the county, so the fire department can get over their boxes and they're the only ones that have that key. So I checked into it and of course you see the price, it's about five hundred and fifty dollars a box, but it'll be there forever. Um, there is a old rickety door in the finance office that is not very weather tight, so I'm gonna try to get that door out of there and make it a wall because the door's never been used since I've been here and well before that. And it has been under let critters at times, so I'm trying to get that replaced. Basketball's, uh, gold safety straps, just a recommendation from the inspection company that we may wanna put safety straps on the basketball goals in case a cable were to break eventually. Um, I guess it's happened around the country. We do get them inspected and they're fine, but I just added that in here as a, because it was a safety recommendation. And the activity buses that, uh, wrapping two of them to give them some kind of semblance of Curritown County since they're very basically plain purchased and plain for a reason and we all know that reason, but.
They don't work.
They don't work.
Can we find that again? I mean, could we?
Present that?
Present that to them again? Is it a new group of people?
Same old, same old.
Don't waste your time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've attempted a couple of times.
I'm sure you have.
I, I just wonder if they have money that, you know, would be spent on tourism? If they had extra this year, they'd like to spend it on out?
Could we did?
Yeah. Put a lock in their rear tank?
Yeah. All right, uh, I'm sure you've seen, like, uh, storage areas that have cages in front of them that lock. I wanted to enclose the warehouse shelves so we can monitor things a little bit, make sure that everything. We keep our inventory, everything's fine, but I just wanna bring this into the twenty-first century and make sure we, we can control it. Uh, and as you see, number six, maintenance director's already kicked over to the cutout list. So we won't talk about that one. And the bike, the, uh, the progress machine would allow my plumbers and HVAC guys to do repairs on the fly without shutting the water off at school. So they would, wouldn't have to do a temporary fix on a water leak until they could get to shutting the water off. They could press a valve in, turn the valve off and then Mike could repair it, press the repair over top of it. So they've asked me for that for two or three years now, so I figured I'd give it a shot. Skip down to, unless you, I mean, child nutrition said that right now, right now, they're good. So let's get down to transportation needs. As Dr. Loops said, here's the, uh, activity bus lease payment. Uh, try to get, still trying to get rid of the old Crown Victorias that are two hundred and fifty thousand miles and get something that's more reliable. So one county vehicle, I have two or three maintenance vans that are rusting out. The engines are still good, but they're in really bad body shapes, so I'd like to get another maintenance van. Uh, we were looking into two-way radios for the buses, but, uh, the county has to upgrade their infrastructure to get us that, so we'll wait on that until another time. And the transportation garage has asked me for some shelving and tire racks and some concrete repairs out of the garage. And mobile unit lease payment on the next page, fifty thousand. And if you have all these things up, total improvements, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Four hundred thousand for technology, twenty-five thousand for contingency and we're slightly over our one point four by nine hundred and twenty-five dollars right now. So it needs to be tweaked a little bit, but that's the beginning. This is the draft. This is pretty close to what I'm gonna be.
But that doesn't include the painting?
No, I've gotta get those quotes and try to figure out what else needs to go away or if the painting's way above you.
I have a couple of questions, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, with the new additions at Moyacay Elementary and Moyacay Middle, now I know you had a little bit of desk in there for Moyacay Middle, but I'm guessing those things that are needed will be in the next budget?
They're actually included in the project.
Are they? Oh, in the project?
Uh, they're supposed to be pretty close to turnkey. We've actually sat through some meetings and picked out the furniture that's gonna be in the schools. I sent emails to the project manager regarding, hey, if there's money in the budget, can we fully outfit the teachers' workrooms with refrigerator, microwave, laminating machine, things that they've asked for, things that they think should be in there? Um, yeah, um, a lot of the technology needs are included as well, so it's gonna be pretty close to turnkey. That's what we're trying to do.
And one more question. At the high school, there's a mobile unit behind the football stadium.
Mm-hmm.
And I visited, I talked with you about it after a while, so I visited it's, uh, I think one of the teachers is trying to make it a teaching station.
Mm-hmm.
And it looked really good except for it needed some paint.
We've, I've had my painter in there doing drywall repair and painting repair my last week and a half or so. There was also a report that the dryer may not be working in there, but it actually was. I had my, my appliance guy check it out. He went in for a while, it dries himself in and it was fine.
Well.
And it was something else too.
I was told about the dryer, that it would just take hours, that they were having to use the football dryer.
Okay.
Um, so.
Well, I'll look into it further and see what that situation is. I had that problem at my house. The, the poor design of the, the, uh, ventilation system on my dryer. My wife fusses about it all the time, but I can redo it, so. Yeah, we'll get to it. But I've had my drywall guy and painter in there. I haven't checked his work yet, but I'll check it out tomorrow.
Because they were doing a really good job with their plan.
Yeah.
And I just thought that would squeeze it up a little.
I have a question, since you put the desk on here and we spent all day at the, uh, middle schools. And speaking of desks, I swear, walking around Curritown Middle, I think some of those desks were when I was there in high school. I mean, and, and I mean, they were getting beat up. How long did we keep using them? I mean, some of them, they just last forever until they fall?
I mean, if you typically, when they break, you'll see them out by the dumpster, but I'll be honest with you. I've been here six years, so I don't know what the life expectancy on a desk is. And typically I wait for the school to say, hey, we need some new desks and I'm gonna start looking at the price. Which, as you can see, thirty desks, thirty desks, fifty-five hundred dollars.
I mean, I come in, I said, I, I'm pretty sure that classroom I had, there in that cabinet and there's a desk and.
I don't know. It's probably basically, I guess, until it just falls apart.
But I mean, they're, you know, some of them are like chipped and not stable. I mean, because we went in, we even saw the baby chickens. So we, um, so when you said desk, I'm just thinking, I mean, is that something you have to, one by one, they break? You just order one or do you?
We typically, as they get thrown out, as junk, we replace them with something that, I mean, some of the old ones, we could probably still, the designs are still there, so we could probably still take a picture and say, can you get something closer to this, which is what I've done in the past. So.
I have a question for Susan, not to put you on the spot. So just as a capital outlay budget for the next fiscal year, can you give me a ballpark idea for our capital outlay fund downs will be at the beginning of the next fiscal year?
I think right now, we just got the ADM bump from the state, which calls us to have to shift a bunch of stuff in the budget. And we're, we're currently moving a bunch of salaries, which DCA will only let you do in stages. So that'll be done by Monday. So I could email the board next week and give you an idea once the budget is finally in place. But, yeah, all this late stuff happening in the year.
I don't wanna pressure, but do, when you get a chance, you know, if you could.
I will.
Well, we're in mid-March. We just got the funding from the state, so it's delayed, as Susan just mentioned. We can't, she can't move funds. She can only move so many funds at a time. So our entire budget process keeps getting delayed. We're, we're fortunate that we did receive funding, so we're, we're happy that that came through.
Yeah.
But it is, it is gonna put a lot of pressure on funding against us to bring that budget to you in April. We're gonna get it done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Matt, as always, thank you for keeping our schools in such good shape.
Money's not going as far as it used to. I can tell that just in five years.
Personally, yeah, anything you do now is, is twice as much.
I'm getting feedback from contractors. If I give you a quote right now, you might wanna make sure that you bump it twenty percent because it's not staying.
That's what they're doing at the beach. They're, the people that are building custom homes. And the contractor with the builder, there's a twenty percent clause in there.
Yeah, they can't guarantee pricing on anything more than two or three months, man.
Right. Well, thank you.
Oh, another question for Matt. I saw on TV last night that I think it was Newport P. Schools, you don't have, uh, school buses that run on natural gas?
Wow. I have heard of them, yeah.
I think a hundred and twenty of them. I was just wondering if they're more efficient or cheaper or better?
They, they maybe. I can tell you just, Jimmy and I had this conversation today and I don't wanna rail on his break because he may mention it tonight, I doubt it, but he said that, uh, North Carolina, EPI Transportation, plans by two thousand thirty to have a large percentage of electric buses on the road because they have a hundred and twenty mile range. So they, they have less parts that break down and it would cost us less to fuel our buses. So, yeah.
Thirty twenty miles. We get to the point where.
Yeah, yeah, they're breaking down at the high school.
Yeah, we need some plug-ins.
Well, that's what I said. I said, it's great if they wanna do that and I'm all for the environment and, and saving diesel fuel, but we need to make sure that the grid is there to, to charge them and who's gonna help us pay for that grid at the schools or the parks, so.
This is why I still question, because this is out of my, um, expertise. Is there such a thing as a hybrid bus?
No, they went through, they went strictly from diesel to electric, yeah. And, and the three big, the big three manufacturers will really push it. They've, all three of them have contacted me this year to come out and see their new electric bus.
I wonder why they don't?
I don't know. They may, it's probably because the industry is slowly phasing hybrids out to go full electric because they've gotten the technology better about it. That's probably why. I don't know if y'all know this, but you travel across North Carolina and stop at a gas station and there's Tesla charging stations.
There sure are, yeah.
And that's just within the last six months.
I think Wawa.
Wawa does it. Sheetz does it out in North Carolina and Wawa does it in Virginia.
And they're getting a Wawa at your community house.
Yeah, yeah, I heard that.
All right, well, thank you again. Any other questions? All right. School calendar update.
On the topic of advocacy, let's begin another plug. While we're contacting all of our local representatives, um, calendar flexibility would be another great topic to add to that. So, um, you do have copies of the K through twelve comprehensive high school, um, draft calendars. JP Knapp just revised theirs later this afternoon. I did not throw off a new copy of that, but I'll get that to you, um, when we go back over to the office. Um, our plan is to solicit feedback on these two draft calendars after the meeting tonight and then be ready to present calendars for a vote on the April board meeting. Couple of things to note. I sound like a broken record every year when I have to say this, but calendar law states that you cannot begin school until the Monday closest to August twenty-sixth. This year, that means August the twenty-ninth. So that is the earliest, without any flexibility, that we can begin school. You'll remember that we were granted some flexibility previously after COVID to start and add five extra days into the calendar, which meant we could start a week earlier. That no longer exists. So again, the earliest that we can start right now, based on general statute for calendar law, is August the twenty-ninth. Two hundred and fifteen days are required from the start of the first workday to the last workday in the calendar for ten-month employees. So when you start the calendar, you must have two hundred and fifteen total days for your teaching center instructional staff. So that's another requirement. And that does however include holidays and annual leave and workdays. It is from start to finish, a two-hundred-and-fifteen-day calendar. So if you take a gander at the two options that you have, you'll notice the start date and then you'll notice the end date. No, no way possible for us to get out in May like we were able to do this past year. The two draft calendars, however, you will notice in option one, that we do attempt still in the second calendar, excuse me, option two, to finish first semester at Christmas break. It does however mean that we have to modify it and what we've always known as our two weeks at Christmas looks a little bit different. It is still two weeks at Christmas. It just falls to more towards the backside of Christmas than it does the front side of Christmas. So, um, I will be very open and honest that I don't love these calendars in the sense that I would rather start a little bit earlier, make sure our semester cleanly ends before Christmas break. Um, but until we get some flexibility, there's not much I can do with that. So we did opt to keep our early release days in the calendar. So we did opt to keep our early release dates in the calendar for professional development. Um, you will note that beginning next year, you've heard a lot about letters training coming for our K-five staff. We feel strongly that we will need these dates to be able to provide an opportunity for those staff to receive this professional development. Ms. Hodges will share a little bit more coming up, um, at the start of next school year about all that's required with letters training. But we did just get confirmation that our dates for letters training were approved based on these early release dates, which means we will be able to provide time for our staff to complete this training while it's in the school day, not after school, not on weekends, like some of our partnering L E As are doing to their staff, or on their own. Um, it is a master's level course, seventy-two hours that our folks are gonna have to complete. Um, and we feel very strongly that we need to try to provide them time in the calendar for that to happen.
I wonder, you know, looking at these two, on one, we've got the second grade ending period ending the twenty-first, and on the other one, it's a month later.
Yeah, because of all the-
So again, trying to balance out your two semesters. So in option two-
Yeah.
Trying to finish before Christmas break is uneven. And that's the best you can do.
That's really good.
Yeah, so that pink bar down in the middle of the calendar details, you'll see Q-one and Q-two, the number of days in each of the quarters.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
And you've just got a lot more day, okay.
Yeah, it, 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 again, you have to do your best to try to balance the two, um, and provide flexibility in there. But, um, I know how much everybody loved ending the first semester before winter break. And I tried really hard to make that happen because I believe in it, and I believe it's good for kids. Um, it just makes things a little wonky, and it will be a, a change from what we've always done. So we have to decide, is that, if it's really that worth it, do we then adopt something that looks similar to this? Or just go back to the way we had done it before?
When you talk about everybody loving it, that's mainly a high school thing, correct?
It's all of our staff. No, we, our calendar feedback survey that we did last year-
They liked ending that.
It was from kindergarten through twelfth grade.
I can see that. I think-
Semester for middle school, which has electives that switch over.
What about elementary?
It was resounding all the way across. I mean, really truthfully, it was not lopsided one way or another.
I think that is best for kids.
I didn't think they had all the assessment that the upper grades have.
No, I mean, only high school has to worry about the exams. And, and middle school switches over electives in a semester, so they do have to take exams for C T E courses. So for the point of assessment, it makes sense for our secondary schools to be on that calendar. But everybody's feedback really was that they enjoyed having that semester, grading being finalized, nothing carrying over, done before Christmas break, wrap it up, everybody goes home, and then we come back, start for the new semester.
We did attempt last year to send, put in a calendar that was outside of state statute. Um, and state called, basically said-
I remember that.
Go ahead, lose your funding, go ahead and do that. So.
I just wonder about this, well, I see you're giving them two optional workdays, even though if the semester ends December twenty-first, there's a lot of work to be done once it ends. I don't wanna work it over Christmas, you know, but.
Okay. Any other questions? That's always a challenge. I don't know how you do it.
It is a puzzle for sure, yeah. There's so many moves.
And now you're gonna get staff laid.
Yes, we are. Red, red it out. Um, in the past, you put it up to families, parents, and to our staff. And so we intend to do the same thing. Um, you know, some things we can't control. And I can't put all the, I mean, it's too hard for, you know, everybody to understand exactly what's required, but, um, we'll get the feedback, take it into consideration, and see if we can amend it a little bit more, and then present some options for you to vote on at the April meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anti-bullying practices.
So, discussion, whatever.
Oh, I, well, I've just, uh, had some parents reach out. Mainly, it seems to be in the middle schools. And I, I don't know, I guess I'd like some info, maybe from the principals, if COVID has generated, if you're seeing your students kind of being more aggressive?
So, and we think, and, 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 we've, we've had a lot of discussion internally. One of the things that's going on is that we walked around and we did not interact. Some kids did not interact for over a year and a half with their peers. And then when we came back, we had masks, and they were required, and then we've taken them off. And now, some of the kids, I think, of, need to be re-indoctrinated into how we treat each other and, and how we should act towards one another.
And it's not only kids. It's not only kids, it's everybody.
Yeah, they're learning from all of them.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's all over. I mean, you go to Walmart, there's some rude people.
So, we have seen it.
Kids learn from their parents sometimes.
There has been a lot. I mean, with the, middle school is always an uncomfortable place. And so you have kids in seventh grade, that is the most un, tends to be the most uncomfortable year for a child's education. And they are, they have been not interacting with peers for a number of months, over a year. And here we come out, and we're, we're, we're meshed together, and here we go. And they're adept at picking out differences and anything that we, we pick on each other sometimes to make ourselves feel better. And that's a terrible thing. Um, we're gonna continue to monitor and watch and try to intervene. Um, I know we had several situations over the past couple of weeks. Um, and unfortunately, we continue to have those. Um, Jane, do you want to skip any of the programs we currently have in place?
Sure. Um, at the middle schools, um, Curritect Middle has raised a roundtable that does a lot to try to promote kindness activities. And at Moat Middle, um, they have the Friends of Rachel Club that they've continued since, um, we did that before. Um, and with, with Moat Middle, the sixth grade, the guidance counselors with the sixth grade, they did the, um, the survey from Jim Vicinius that we had a couple of years ago that came and spoke to all the staff. They gave it to the teachers, they gave the survey to the teachers, they gave the survey to the students. Um, and so then they met with the teachers, and they went in and met with the students. And, um, they chose sixth grade for a variety of reasons. One, there were some issues there. But another is that you have to be, the, the students have to be honest because it asks questions like, um, how many times have you witnessed bullying in the past? How many times have you recorded it? How many times have you bullied someone? You know, and that kind of thing. So kids have to be honest with what they are saying, um, in that. Um, but they get a lot of data from that. The, um, the survey gives them a lot of data because the kids are named. So the students don't know, but the teachers know and the staff know.
What about the program?
What about the O V A S?
Yes.
Great. It comes with a good system.
So, um, the O V A S is at Jarvis Starkey Grades, and they are going strong with their morning meetings and classroom lessons that all the teachers are doing, um, school-wide in those.
So they've been trained?
They've been trained.
Correct.
And, um, if you will recall, in our strategic plan, in year two, we have it, so that K-eight schools, all of the K-eight schools will be trained. And we do have tentative dates for that. Um, but we have kind of put that on pause for a minute because, um, the state also requires with N T S S that we have a tier-one social-emotional curriculum. And so the district, uh, N T S S team, which Renee Zellin and myself, um, we've been looking at a variety of social-emotional curriculum. And we're trying to look at, um, what is a good fit, um, what meets our needs, and also, does it require a lot of extra work for teachers? Because we already know at K-five, they're gonna have to do that letters training, um, in addition to implementing social-emotional.
Are you saying we might not go forward with this program at the elementary level?
So I think it's something we, we're gonna have to strongly consider. As Virginia says, so again, as the state tends to do, they're gonna require us to implement something without any funding or support. So we have to have a tier-one social-emotional curriculum across the board. That social-emotional curriculum will cover bullying as part of its components, in addition to other mental health awareness, those types of things. So we can do O V A S that has specific requirements for like morning meetings and time away from instruction. And then we can pile on top of that a tier-one S E L curriculum and the implementation of that, and letters training. So we are saying, we need to evaluate to see what's gonna be the best pay for our buck, for our staff and for our students. Um, O V A S will only do bullying. That's it. No social-emotional, no mental health, no, none of the other components.
And there's definitely social and emotional and, and-
Well, I mean, that, that's why kids bully.
That two years that we've had.
So it, it goes to that. So we, we, what we've done is we hauled our gates still to move forward for training for all of our schools. But if, if it doesn't, that doesn't count as a tier-one, um, from the state level. So, I mean, do we pile that on top of one more thing for everybody else?
Well, we spent a good amount of money on it. And it was supposed to be implemented, I believe, in two thousand nineteen. And it kind of fell through the cracks with the training. And then twenty-twenty along came COVID. And we couldn't get it done. But if it's having a positive impact on bullying at Griggs and Jarvisburg, then I think it's worth really looking at. I, I, I got calls this week, too, on bullying. There are kids being bullied. And that's bad. I mean, I still, I went and listened to the gentleman we had that called the bullies mildew. That has stuck out in my mind, and, you know-
Those Jim Vicinius, though, were, are doing that, 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 that way.
And he says, this is how you handle the bully. And that sometimes works, but-
It was, was it, it was before COVID, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Because I went to it, and I remember.
Well, you mentioned Friends of Rachel, so that's concern of Rachel's challenge, right? That's in connection. Um, but we haven't had that in several years. So the students that are Friends of Rachel, how are they, um, do we just have the one school? How do they know about Rachel's challenge?
So the student, the guidance counselor, she, she just kind of gives them a background on that. And so the premise of the club is the same as it was for Friends of Rachel. Um, and she gives them a little bit of background. They just chose to never to change the name of the club.
Do we just have one school that has that club? I think we need to maybe branch out with that. I, and I hate to throw that program, push it. I mean, I don't like putting all this stuff on teachers. But this bullying, I just feel like we need to really try and address it.
So the O V A S program is a program at a full train that requires a certain level of fidelity-
Yeah.
-to implement.
Yeah.
You also mentioned Jim Vicinius, which is what, we're doing some surveys. And, and Jim's work is, is similar to O V A S, but does not require the level of, uh, like, the protocols that we're gonna meet and do and so forth. So we're trying to find where that happy medium is, given all the other, and, and they are mandates from the state to implement in a social-emotional learning program. At the same time, we're gonna implement letters training. And so we're gonna try to find that balancing point. So Virginia, and, crap, we can be in the committee and, um, talk about where's that happy medium? If it's not O V A S, then what? And what's not going, what's gonna have a positive impact on our kids? And at the same time, not put an undue burden on our staff to implement another component? Because there's only, so, and, and in elementary, and I'm glad you pointed that out, tends to get hit with the highest burden.
They do.
They, they do.
And they have the less, lesser amount of time of playing.
Firefighting, we're gonna have both safety, bullet, you name it, it's gonna be run through.
But I would think this topic would, and maybe I'm wrong, would be best served within middle school kids. You know, with, with visiting the elementary school, I don't see that developing as fast until they get in middle school. It seems to be a big problem in middle school.
But the idea was to teach them correct behavior in elementary.
It's a blend of both, is what it is. So it is proven that early intervention, especially at third grade, at third and fourth grade, has a positive reduction in bullying-type behaviors. Without a doubt, it does continue in the middle school. Uh, Jim Vicinius's work speaks to how to deal with it once it starts. Thus the surveys, the distancing, identifying, moving kids away from other kids, and so on, where O V A S is a long-term functioning program to prevent it altogether.
Ms. Derby, I believe, was one that we set for training. I'd love to hear from her and what, you know, I mean, obviously, she's the one implementing it at Griggs and Jarvisburg. She's the counselor there. I'd love to hear her thoughts.
You know, we just wait until the, kind of, you know, school district comes up with a plan.
Well, they did do the presentation. And Nicole and Stephanie Cox and, was it just a two? Met with us and our N T S S team to talk through, again, weighing out the pros and cons of O V A S.
So they're involved in this committee?
Absolutely, yeah. Oh, yeah. We talked through it, they gave us a presentation, talked to us about it. And, you know, we're very clear that it does not, it would not count towards a tier-one S E L curriculum because it only focuses on bullying. Um, and again, success at the elementary level, I wish we would have piloted it with middle schools first to see, are we really getting the success out of, out of middle school versus elementary? Because I do think there's a difference between what happens as bullying at an elementary level versus a middle school level.
And we may not really see how successful it is until the kids that are getting the training now in elementary get to the middle school level. I don't know.
So it's just tough, I mean, it's not off the table by any stretch of the imagination. It's just that we got hit, and we're like, we need to reevaluate what we're asking right now and, and where this falls, and, and try to do what's best, not only for our students, but for our staff as well. And so everything's on the table.
One more thing on that.
It is, but I mean, it's important.
Oh, yeah, it's very important.
It's absolutely important. And, um, our kids are more vulnerable now to, and sensitive to a lot of things than ever before. And so it's, it's definitely something that we need to address. I think it comes from the whole social-emotional part. And if we can find a curriculum that we feel like we can use, uh, as a tier-one all the way across the board, then I think that that would be important as well.
And the makeup of the team that, you know, that we had before is gonna be, would be different now anyway because some of those folks are no longer with us. So after, um, after N T S S kind of makes a better decision than, um, Dr. Doherty and Miss Rose, we can, we can reach from being a team, um, that has like Nicole and Stephanie and somebody from Moat Middle who can speak to the things that they've been doing. Um, and, and we can maybe talk about, do we just fold it all into what N T S S is doing, or do we use the Instagram?
And I'm seeing bulletin boards, like, we saw one today at Moat Middle, where teachers are pulling in the kindness and why, why things are going on. So, you know, there are, the teachers are working hard to do what they can to help.
And that's what I, I feel like a lot of times the peers, you know, the students, yeah, I certainly don't wanna put more pressure on the teachers or something else to have to start, you know, keep watching. But if there were any, any type of programs or anything we could do, I don't know, um, have people come and talk at the middle school to try to, because I know, you know, you know, in your kids, I know in my daughter's grade, I mean, there's a crew, and if someone's getting down, or they're hurt, or whatever, they come and, and get them back on track or tell somebody to leave them alone. So it's kind of like, is there something we can do to have the kids involved to help each other out, to get through this? Because we all know kids are taking, handling this differently. They're handling COVID differently. They're handling, going back, interacting. They're handling how their parents are, you know, going back to work full force and no mask. I mean, you know, they have a lot of changes. So, yeah, I'm not trying to look for something else for the, uh, staff to do. It is more about making sure our, our kids, putting it, you know, on them to help them know they need to look out for their peers. You know, you may be doing great, but your friend may not. And just to make sure, you know, just look out for each other, I guess, is, is kind of, I guess, what we can do, hopefully, maybe sooner than later, um, in the, because, I mean, these next couple of months, there's, we still have a couple of months of this year.
Forty-six days. Okay. Okay, all right, Ms. Rose?
I just wondered about our substitute situation. Is that getting better? Like at the high school, are we still having to pull teachers to cover during the planning?
So we do still have a few pockets of teachers, but nothing like what we were experiencing in the midst of the craziness. So I do believe we're in a much better situation right now than we were about two months ago. And it felt like we had 13 uncovered positions and we're trying to save, you know, pull teachers here, there, everywhere to cover. We are currently working, we were able to purchase our own teacher effectiveness training, of course, which means we do not have to wait now for somebody to sign up for COA or Wake Tech or any of these. So I have been working, in fact, we have another update at the end of this week to personalize that course so we can customize it. So I've been working with them to customize with our policies, our procedures for lockdowns, all that kind of stuff, so it goes into the training specific to Courtech County schools. So we have that now. It will be a live link that we'll send out and make live so everybody can go in and get that certification for effective teacher training and we can onboard them hopefully much sooner.
That's great.
We're excited about that opportunity so that it can expedite the process. And then really what can happen is, of course, our elementary schools are great with Class Dojo and so they can send that link out. Anybody that's interested, take this course. I get a dashboard that tells me these are the people that completed it. Then we can start with the interview process to get them onboarded and subbing in our schools much quicker.
And the high school with their stakeholder newsletter each week.
Yep, yep.
Well, I did go to the home show and I noticed we had, I guess, the transportation director there recruiting for substitute bus drivers and I think that was real positive and he had signed some folks up. So hats off to them for doing that. And I wondered about teacher survey results. Has that ended?
Nope, it is still going on. So we've been updating our principals. I've been sending reminder emails to them probably two or three times thus far. So it's still live. We are still collecting survey results. So we have a few of our schools are already at 100% completion rate for their buildings. We have a few that we're still working on to try to get up to, you know, an acceptable percentage participating. But it's voluntary and that's the other thing. We can't ask them, we can't make somebody complete that survey. But we do have all the codes out and all the buildings know who their representative are in their buildings to get their codes for it.
And it is anonymous. I mean, we do not know who's putting what, correct?
That is correct.
I hope that they will all take time to complete that survey.
But they don't believe it's anonymous.
No, they don't.
That's the problem.
Well, our world is like that now.
I know, I know. And it's a shame because then they don't want to fill it out because they're afraid if it's something, a negative comment is going to come back on them.
But truthful comments are going to help make things better.
I wonder if we could offer some little perk. A hundred percent, or is that not legal?
You can offer free ice cream, because John Nutrition will get us.
Couple more questions. The reading assessment in K-3, the results of that, you know, of course, we're all worried what the effects were on those children, really K-3 with the beginning reading skills. And do we have any data that would give us an indication of how your kids are doing with reading? Any recent data or?
What we have seen is that we do not see the effect as great as what people would anticipate.
Very good.
So we're, we don't see the gap quite as large as what people would think it would be. I will say that I do have concerns with our current first, second grade group, more so that second grade because that second grade group is the group that didn't finish kindergarten and had a sporadic first grade where that foundational reading takes place. I also see some gaps with our math, especially when we get into that middle level math, that five, six, seven, eight period where it's very much building block, foundational, interline. And so I do have some concerns in both of those areas. We recognize that. Our instructional coaches are working diligently to close those gaps along with our literacy coaches. And so we are, our teachers are very receptive and we are aware that those are there.
I just wonder if there's a larger number of caps this year, you know, than previous years because of, you know, reading and math skills, but.
We'll see. We did, and I do, we're fortunate here in Courtech that we, we went to school for the most part throughout. And we maintained as much of a sense of normalcy as we could, including doing NC check-ins last year, which wasn't necessarily a problem, but I think it kept that rhythm and that routine going for our students. And we offered the same strong programming online as well for our students in the K-5 or in the state home. So I do feel confident that we are closely holding serve almost. If we're going to see some slide, but I don't think we're going to see a massive slide.
I hope we can catch them up. And my last comment was accreditation. I know we submitted the application and we had a response from DPI.
We have not had a response yet. We'll see.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all for being here today. I'd like to adjourn the session for March 50, 2022. Thank you.